Please welcome our mayor, Buddy Dyer.
Good afternoon, I'm Mayor Buddy Dyer and I'd like to welcome you to the September 23rd, 2013 meeting of the Orlando City Council. We begin today's proceedings with the invocation today offered by Rabbi David Kay. Rabbi Kay has served the Congregational Hove Shalom in Orlando and now in Maitland since 2004. Founded in 1918, Hove Shalom is Orlando's original and oldest synagogue. From 1926 to '74, the synagogue was located at Church in the Old World, providing the inspiration for the name of the sanctuary downtown, which now stands on that site. Hove Shalom has been an active partner in the community, including monthly work at the Coalition for the Homeless, weekly medical and support staffing for Shepherd's Hope. Rabbi Kay is a member of the Mayor's Council of Clergy and the Executive Committee of the Interfaith Council of Central Florida, from which he coordinates the annual interfaith celebration of the legacy of Dr. Martin Luther King with the Mayor's Commission on Martin Luther King Jr. Holiday. The invocation will be followed by the pledge led today by District 3 Commissioner Robert Stewart. Would everyone please join me instead?
The Korah Chaim, source of all life, alone among all the creatures of the earth, human beings are endowed with the ability to think and to choose freely, to build up, tear down, to come together in peace and unity, or to set ourselves against one another. It is this gift of intellect, free will, and creativity which indeed makes us human. May those among us who choose or are chosen to lead our communities be mindful of the true burden they carry. May they always be aware that leadership is found not in the exercise of authority but in the dedication to service. Inscribe on their hearts the obligation to those they serve, by whom they are designated to lead, and for whom they speak and act in the exercise of their office. Where there is disagreement, may it be for the sake of heaven, a respectful, forthright, and constructive dialogue where the beneficiaries are those they serve. Where there is opportunity to do justice, imbue each of them with the courage of conviction so as not to be daunted by sentiment or tempted by the lure of expediency, but rather to act always with righteousness and compassion. And where there is consensus, may it be reached in deep humility for and profound awe of the high honor and trust which true service and leadership demand. May the work of all our hands make manifest the noblest yearnings of our hearts and minds. And may each of those who take up the mantle of leadership wear it with dignity, with purpose, and with wisdom. B'amenu Kenyih Ratzon. May this come to be in our day. Amen.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Thank you Rabbi. Let's call a meeting to order. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll and make a determination of a quorum, please?
Commissioner Gray?
Here.
Commissioner Ortiz?
Here.
Commissioner Stewart?
Here.
Commissioner Sheen?
Here.
Commissioner Linum?
Here.
Commissioner Eames?
Here.
Mayor Dyer?
Here.
Mayor Wanda Quon.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Let's take up the meeting minutes from the General Review City Council and first budget hearing from last Monday, September 16th, 2013. Motion by Commissioner Ortiz for approval of those minutes, second by Commissioner Sheen on favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed and so the motion carries. What a pleasant surprise, there's our Congresswoman coming to visit us. Before I, we had no presentations today, so before I take up the Mayor's Update, I want to invite the Honorable Corinne Brown to come to the podium and tell us anything you'd like to tell us about Congresswoman. The Congresswoman always delivers and I can think of nobody that has done more for the city of Orlando during my tenure, from DC anyways, than Corinne Brown, and we're always happy when you're in town.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and good afternoon. And I think I just left Commissioner Linum, we were together in Washington for the major CBC National Workshops and Information Weekend.
CBC?
Congressional Black Caucus.
Okay, not everybody knows.
But I had a meeting this morning with Nancy Pelosi, she was in town, and also Mr. Morgan, and I found out we had a major announcement today that a billion five was deposited here in Orlando, and we are paying the black farmers, that eighteen thousand from the federal government, that we've been in lawsuit for years, so it is selling, and that is a major thing for the small black businesses, and I'm really excited about it. That's great. A billion five. And just a little update on the positiveness that's going on in Washington, if there is something like positive going on in Washington. We're gonna have a water bill. We have not had a water bill in seven years, and in fact, only two in the last fourteen years. And the water is the Water Resource Bill, and of course, is major for Florida as far as our ports are concerned. And so, we're working very closely with the other members to make sure that when we pass a water bill, Florida needs will be taken care of. And as I told the chairman, failure is not an option for Florida. I mean, we're in a position that will generate millions of jobs for Floridians. And of course, it's a win-win between the federal, state, and local government, and I am impressed that the state government has come up to the plate and put up over three hundred million for our ports. So the federal government needs to be partners in this process. And of course, the last thing is whether or not the government will shut down. I am hoping that there will be some adults at the table. Right now, I can't tell you who are the players, but I hope that, you know, I've been elected for twenty-two years. This has never happened but one other time, and it's no need to happen at all. And I met during the break with the court system, and people talk about, well, the cuts weren't that major. We don't have courts on Friday here in Orlando and in our district because of the sequester. So it has hurt in many different ways, and it's very important that we get back to regular order and doing business and not just, you know, I always ask when does the politics end and the service begin. And I'm hoping that we have some adults left in Washington. So with that, I will open for any questions. I'm happy to be here today to just say hello and just report.
Well, thank you for all that you do, and you had a hand in helping us get some tighter grants that have allowed us to move forward on the Leno expansion, and I'm happy to report to you that both of those projects are well underway and will be operational prior to Sunrail being in operation on, on or before, May 1st of next year. I don't know if you've had an opportunity yet to visit and see the cars, the Sunrail cars, but they are beautiful, and we anticipate that ridership is gonna far exceed the estimates very quickly after Sunrail opens. With that, I will ask anybody else, comments or questions?
Mayor, I just simply wanna welcome the Congresswoman and to say really a special thanks for all she does, especially in her transportation. If you try to go down Church Street, you will see that your dollars are at work and you will not be able to travel down Church Street. Because you gave us so much money years ago, and Church Street has been improved all the way up to the Citrus Bowl. And we want to say real special thanks, and for your presentation to Metro Plan and all the things you do regarding ports, or regarding highways, regarding bridges, everything you do in transportation, and of course, those things you do here at home, it has nothing to do with transportation, it just has to do with social services. I'm hoping that in the future, when we have some town meetings, town hall meetings, we go into Affordable Care Act, that maybe we can join together with other people who believe that poor people should have healthcare. I have healthcare, why would I want to deny anybody else from having it just because I have a job? So I'm hoping to get with you real soon about that.
I'm looking forward to it. So let's just say, poor people, working people, working, worse than peoples, working, poor that work every day but can't afford healthcare. And that is the case, and I want you to know that those people in Congress that's talking about healthcare, we all have that.
Absolutely.
Yes, so the key is that everybody needs it.
And they have a paycheck.
That's right.
I don't want other people to have a paycheck. So I just want to express my sincere appreciation to you right now at this special time of surprise, because I think we have this great opportunity before us to enlighten our own community and educate them, because it's the right thing to do. And I wanna say in front of you that Mayor Dyer and I have been doing some great things, our whole council, and I think our city council ought to be the model that Congress ought to look to. What you think?
Absolutely.
I'm getting tired.
You know what, this is a very bipartisan commission that works very well together.
And diverse. Yeah, very diverse. Just nobody cares if you, you know, the garbage man is Republican or Democrat, they just want that garbage picked up.
Absolutely.
They just want what they want and what they need and what we were elected for.
Well, those are the two committees I've served them, Veterans Affairs and Transportation. And people don't care, you know, when people serve this country, we don't ask them when they raise their hand, right, heard your pledge, leaving the flag, we don't ask them what party. They're fighting to preserve our rights and our freedoms, and so we need to do the same when it comes to providing goods and services to them.
I wanna say thank you.
Any questions?
Commissioner Eames?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to say hello, Congresswoman Brown, and it's good to see you here in Orlando. But I also want to remind the council, as well as the public, that Helping Hand Foundation Trust is having a tribute luncheon honoring Congresswoman Corinne Brown on Saturday, and it's at 12:00 PM to 2:00 PM, and it's gonna be at the Rosen Center Hotel down at 9840 International Drive. So please come out.
Thank you for the invitation. The truth is, I don't forget my schedule.
But, 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 if you try to get this price out there for you too, Congresswoman, the price is fifty dollars per person and five hundred dollars a table, so please, for those that may wanna come and continue to give tribute and honor to Congresswoman Corinne Brown, please come out and do that.
But be clear, the money's not going to me, it's going to the charity.
It's going to Helping Hand Foundation Trust. Thank you.
And Congresswoman, I'm gonna give my regrets now. That's the day when I joined the girls, you know, a busy day with the Baez's and the Janeway Hill, that we're gonna be cleaning up, and I've never seen anybody show up for our big cleanups, but I really have to do that, I've already told Reggie and Vinita and everyone, but you certainly have my support.
Well, thank you for joining us, Congresswoman.
Thank you.
Okay, I have just a few items for the Mayor's Update. Downtown Orlando Partnership will be hosting Miami State at the Downtown Address on Thursday, October the 10th, at the M.A. Center, starting at 11:15 running to 1:00 this luncheon, also serves as a fundraiser for the Downtown Orlando Partnership, so if you're interested, you're interested in purchasing tickets for that, you can go to downtownorlandopartnership.com, and if you can't attend but you're interested in seeing it, it'll be streaming live at citoyorlando.net. You may have noticed some construction fences going up in and around Lake Yola Park, and that is the first installations of the Sea Art Orlando sculptures. One has already been installed at the History Center, one is in the roundabout by World of Beer, or when World of Beer eventually opens there. And on November the 18th, we will have a community unveiling and celebration for all eight pieces. You can get more information on that at seaartorlando.com. I wanna mention several items on the agenda, and two relate to the Orlando City Lions and our efforts to gain major league soccer status for them. The first is something that is unique in the history of Central Florida, and that's a funding agreement, where Seminole County will be supporting the construction of the stadium on Church Street. They are contributing money that will equate to two million dollars, and it stresses the regionalism, the training facility and fields that Orlando City Soccer uses when they bring youth participants and clinics here, are located in Seminole County, and I know that they are going to be working together to find hotel rooms in Seminole County, and it was very appropriate, they had a 5-0 vote at the Seminole County Commission to help us out, and we're in discussion with a couple other potential local government funding partners in addition to Orange County. And then the second item is QTI for Orlando City. As a major league soccer team, they're gonna bring thirty-five additional high-paying jobs to Central Florida, so it's appropriate to access the QTI program. Speaking of economic activity, we are renewing funding agreements for the city's economic development organizations, and we give a little bit of money to help leverage their expertise and promote economic growth in our cities, and a number of representatives from those organizations are here, so would you guys, if you're an economic development organization and they're here to receive a, or here to celebrate, I guess, the partnership with the city of Orlando, please stand and be recognized. Last item that I'm gonna mention briefly, and that I assume Commissioner Linum is gonna do more extensively, is the item related to the continuation of the District 5 Broadband Technology Program, and we recognize Commissioner Linum for her leadership on that specific issue. One item, just before we go, the consent agenda that's on the consent agenda relates to a statutory change by the Florida Legislature last year that is, we are implementing in terms of how our proceedings will be governed in the future, and I wanna call Mayor in just quickly to, according to Commissioner Stewart's request, an agenda review, just highlight those changes.
Sure. Y'all may recall that our lobbyist team came and gave everybody an update, you'll call it, a workshop, and this was actually mentioned by Sean Pittman, but we went over it pretty quickly because it's a relatively minor procedural change. It's minor for the city of Orlando because our mayor and the rest of you do a great job ensuring that the public has the opportunity to have meaningful input. But Florida Statute 786.1114 was amended effective October 1st, so we wanted to be sure we're on the agenda for this meeting, which required us in an abundance of caution to change our policies so that commentary can be made in the same fashion that we do with general appearances, but to the extent those comments relate to a specific agenda item that's on the consent agenda, they'll have to come during our agenda review. So that's the policy we're asking y'all to approve so that we'll be in compliance with the October 1st statutory deadline to put that in place. Again, we'll have usually handled those so that if there is significant commentary, you remove it from the consent agenda, but the legislature has decided in its infinite wisdom that it will tell you how to do that, so we're gonna put that process in place to be sure that we're clear. If there is not agenda item, agenda review for any reason, which I'm not sure why that would be, then the commentary would need to occur during the meeting before consent agenda is moved to approval. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Mayor, for that explanation. We'll move on to the consent agenda, which is a number of items that are worked, that are considered through a single vote of council, and we give each of our council members an opportunity to comment on those consent agenda items and also update you on interesting items that are occurring in their districts, and we will take the order in which that is done. And today, it is Commissioner Stewart's turn to kick us off.
Thank you very much, Mayor, I appreciate it, and let me say thank you for your help with our first mass training for the Hands Only CPR, Take Heart Orlando. So, got a couple pictures from this past Saturday. We trained a hundred and fifty people at the Edgewater High School Gymnasium, and appreciate the mayor being there, and let me just share a couple of people that were involved that was very important to the safety of Orlando. Coast Guard's Chief John Miller, and appreciate you, and Vicki Robles, who just did a yeoman's work on there. Three presenters we had, Pat Kelly, Fireman Pat Kelly, Deputy District Chief Paula Plogger, I'll get it in a minute now, and District Chief J.J. White. We also had some vendor presentations there, Red Cross, Neighborhood Watch, Florida Hospital was there, and we also even had a fire extinguisher display from Inspector Jim Hirsch, and we appreciate that. Public's provided food for us, appreciate Tom Steltzer for the work that he's done. The Orlando Fire Department Explorers and the Orlando Police Department Explorers were there, and of course, Crime Watch was there. I wanna say a special thank you, of course, to Chief Miller and to Vicki, but also to Edgewater High School's Principal, Michelle Erickson, and Matt Turner. It was, it was a good day. It's one of those things where you do it, and every time you finish, you say, I wish a hundred people were more here, or more, more than a hundred people were here, or two hundred more, three hundred more, because it was just a great day in terms of what we did. Orlando's safe for today because of what we did last week, and I appreciate what the chief did, and then we learned a lot also, so that we'll be able to apply to make it more efficient in all the other districts, and that was important for us to do that kind of analysis as well. So Chief, thank you very much, we appreciate that. I think it was a good event. Let me also share a couple of things here coming up. Edgewater High School Homecoming Parade is coming up this week, just wanna make sure everybody is aware of that, and they'll be shutting down Edgewater Drive, and then the Family Parks Recreation Golf Tournament, where the fun starts. I've left a little brochure at each one of your locations, and would love to get you guys to, each of our commissioners to sponsor one foursome, and do a little bit of a, have a little fun with a commissioner's trophy, we can pass it among ourselves. Tyrone Walker will give you a call about setting up a foursome if you'd like to participate. On the agenda today, let me just share a couple of things. One item I'll just share briefly on, Item C17, I'm in favor of what we're doing there, but I also want to remind the council that we have given away about six hundred and fifteen thousand dollars in small business facade grants over the course of the past seven years, and if they, my memory serves me correctly, we've left on the table one point five million that we've not given away. And I think we've not given that away because of procedure, I know that Kim is working on some stuff, and he's gonna continue to work on trying to come up with a plan, but one of the ideas that I floated with y'all several months ago and years ago, was that sometime during the course of the year, we ought to be able to take and pool what's not being, gonna be used during that course of that year, and make it available to some of the older neighborhoods, neighborhoods like Washington Shores and Thornton Park, and areas where we really wanna make sure we're promoting facade grants. These facade grants mean jobs to me, and frankly, if we created three point one million dollars in jobs with six hundred and fifteen thousand dollar investment, we left on the table one point five million, so we left on the table some, effectively, about four or five million dollars more additional jobs. So I'm in favor of this, 'cause I do like the idea of having a fixed amount that we all have to live with, but I'm also in favor of making sure that this money just doesn't go away at the end of each year, and so let's use it, and I know that Kim's working on amendment to this, this plan, pardon me, to accomplish that. And that's all that I have for today, Mayor.
You okay?
Yeah, I think I've just got something caught in my throat.
All right.
Now I have to think about telling you.
Well, I said the Hands Only CPR, so it's a good case. Chief, we learned that if he can respond, then he can.
I'm okay, I'm okay. Don't get the AED, I'm all right.
I guess the training wasn't that good, was it?
Commissioner Sheen?
And Specials Commissioner Stewart, that's most surprising admission, right?
Yeah.
Well, I will be a Come Out With Pride on October 5th Commissioner, so you are safe, so I will not be able to challenge you at golf that day.
Oh, man.
That was actually the day of Come Out With Pride downtown, so I'm gonna be busy that day, but I'm sure that you all will have a great time with the recreational, the recreation golf tournament. We had a great time over the weekend. The Yola House actually opened over the weekend, and Ed, if you could roll just a few pictures of that. Orlando City Council, I wanna thank you all very, very much, because, you know, it was an eight and a half million dollar investment, it was a very controversial development that was gonna go into the park, and that was one, that was the one, that was the actual one public meeting that I had that was kinda scary, because people were just so angry and did not want that development to happen, and to have to come up with eight and a half million dollars in my district during the worst budget years of probably Orlando history, it was tough, but I just wanna thank you all, because what an investment that is, that one point three acres and twenty-nine hundred square feet, meeting space, wedding space, park space, I mean, I'm just absolutely delighted to have this in my district, and, you know, just to have such an amenity for the community, and I'm also really proud that we made this about the public. There's a couple of offices in there here and there, but for the most part, it's for public space, for rentals. It's a 1924 building, and I have to tell you, the vistas that are available, the possible pictures, and the mayor fight song playing on his telephone.
All right, everybody?
We know who's phone that is.
Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor Dyer, that was a, that was, yeah, just back down music, it's all good. So anyway, we opened that over the weekend, and again, if you wanna do like a small corporate retreat, something like that, this space is available, and I just really wanna thank the recreation staff, Chris Wallace, his people, they've just done an amazing job getting it ready, and again, to see all the families out on the, out on the Green over the weekend, and something that I really, really, really wanted to see was to be able to have musical performances on that lawn, and have people be able to come up and watch them, and there was a wonderful group over the weekend, I can't remember the name, but they were playing cellos and stringed instruments, and it was just wonderful to have, and people were sitting on the lawn, it was just an absolutely wonderful day, so, again, thanks to everybody for coming out and enjoying the Yola House, and unless it's rented, it's open to the public, but I think we're gonna have a lot of interest, 'cause I'm already having people calling me about, about the rentals, so, again, this is some of the kids playing on the Green over the weekend. Oh, Fretless Rock, that was the name of the group, they were absolutely wonderful, really, really enjoyed them, so, anyway, great, great event, and thank you, Commissioner Stewart, and thanks for coming out, to the, to the, to Mayor Dyer. Again, I know it was hard to put together the funding for this and for the, for the renovation, but, you know, it just came out wonderful enough, nothing but positive feedback yesterday at the, at the open house, so thanks again. On a Saturday note, as many of you know that my former assistant Chase Smith passed, and we had his funeral in Blountstown, a lot of people could not take the entire day off to go all the way up to the Panhandle and come back to go to his funeral, so we're gonna have a celebration of his life at the Abbey next Monday at 6:00 PM, so that's actually the 27th, oh, no, it isn't, it's the 30th, at September 30th, at 6:00 PM at the Abbey, so it's open to the public, again, we're just gonna celebrate his life, and if you want to come and pay your respects, we'd love to have you at the Abbey, 6:00 PM next Monday. I'd like to welcome Officer Karen Long to my, to my staff, she's over here on the, on the left, so Karen, thank you. She drew the, the short straw OPD to come work with me. So we really look forward to working with you, Karen, and she's a great officer, has a lot of experience, worked with anti-bullying, which is something mayor and dear to my heart, she was a former school resource officer, thirteen years of experience, I'm very, very fortunate to have her working with my team, so again, welcome Officer Long, we love having you on board. On the agenda today, Item A1, we got lots of citizen appointments in District 4, so we're very glad to see that. On Item C1, the Small Business Facade Grant for Amy Rossi Insurance, glad to see that on the agenda too, 'cause the facade grants do so much to really bring up the main streets. And on C15 and C17, the Business Assistance Program and Small Business Facade Program, these are investments that we make with small businesses, as Commissioner Stewart said, these are very good investments that we make in our community, and I'm delighted to see that we're making these available to more small businesses, and that's all I had, Mayor, thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner, we'll move on with Mr. Long here.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, just a few announcements before I get to the agenda, and this past week, I guess we were just here last Monday, it's been a really busy, busy time, but before I get into those parts, I wanna congratulate everyone for the not-for-profits here today, in case I forget it later on the agenda side. But we had the, we didn't But we had the ribbon cutting for the John Young Parkway Flyover. It was the only time you could probably stand in the middle of that street over 441 and not get run over. So it was beautiful, it was a good day, and I want to say real special thanks to FDOT. They've been great partners, getting that Flyover done in two years. And it's been planned for many years, many, many, far beyond two years, well beyond 20 years. So it was great, and I had a great time joining Mayor Dyer and Commissioner Gray down at Sina's Women's Service Training Center, and I'm hoping to go back down and get a tour. We didn't have time to finish the tour, because we were, it was a day of really, really running with Kevin helping me that day. And of course, the Senwell coaches that were in Winter Park on Saturday was a great day. And special thanks to Mayor Dyer, because he really led that call. It sort of came after our failure with Lightwell and then Commuterell, and we were able to move this through, and it was just great seeing those beautiful things there. I can't wait to ride one of them, actually. And Friday night, we had a great time to raise dollars for kids in the city of Orlando. So another thank you, Mayor and your staff. But a unique thing happened Sunday, and I didn't get down to Yola Park, because number one, I had to read my book, and number two, I don't know many people know Carolyn Fennell's mother, one of the most beautiful women in Orlando, Mother Christine Long, was celebrated at the Bit of Life Ministries. So I decided to go there, and of course, it took three hours. Sorry, but don't say quick, Mrs. Ings, I mean Commissioner Ings, you take longer than that up here. But she's one of my, one of my best confidants I used to be, and she's a woman that is just so phenomenal to this city, so just want to share that with you. But the other things, we can probably go to my website or Facebook here at City Hall and pick up some of the pictures, because Ed took lots of pictures Saturday and other times he'd gone out, and he does all of that stuff, and you can go on my website and see it. But I was a little premature going to the agenda last week and congratulating Jessica Burns. I did get the notice, and it was last week, but we're voting on her today for the Downtown Development Board Advisory Board. And of course, Delores Batson is joining our nominating committee. Just because someone is not in your district doesn't mean they can't do a good job of representing your district and the people who are in the district. And both of those women, Delores are nominating, and Jessica Downtown Development Board, would do a great job. She works in District 5, just a great volunteer, one of the up-and-coming young people that we've got to keep our eyes on, because she is phenomenally smart and focused on business. So I want to congratulate her again. And Mayor, I'm very happy on B1, we've had Head Start at Callahan for so long, and it seems as though only local elected officials understand the importance of Head Start, and giving our children a Head Start in life, teaching them to read early, especially young kids, almost infants or toddlers, who may not have the opportunity to get it at home. So I'm very proud that we find room at Callahan, one of our almost historic sites, Old Jones High School, to make this happen. And of course, I support agenda Item C2, Orlando City Soccer, QTI, and of course, the Business Assistance Program. I talked with Kim. I haven't had many facade programs in District 5, but we do have this great opportunity as we lift up the area around the Citrus Bowl to do something special there, and for that reason too, we want to make sure we delay that 50% until after, is it 2015? 2015? So Mayor, that we can do some things in District 5, especially around the Citrus Bowl, as it goes up new and looking good, we can help some of the businesses. And there are not as many small businesses in District 5 that have been able to use it, but we feel this is a great opportunity, and I appreciate Kim and Walter for knocking on every business in, around that area, letting them know what we want to do and see whether they're willing to join us and just lift up the whole community. As the bowl goes up, everybody looks good and feels good. I'd also, Mayor, on D1, on the broadband technology, you know, for over five years, I've traveled and given testimony to FCC regarding broadband technology. Everybody says it, it just slips off your tongue, but it was regarding the fiber optics, it was regarding the tools that we use, mobile tools and whatever else. And this would be the three and a half years, or two and a half years, that I have funded broadband technology that is instructed by UCF Create in Paramore to teach kids how to use their iPods and their iPads and let them understand the importance of how to get their homework. And just as we feel a special relationship to STEM in science and math, my heart goes to the technology pieces also that encompasses STEM. And we've had great partners in this board, this council has been especially great in understanding that. So I do also want to say thanks to Seminole County. I think this is a unique finding of women, I've not seen it in my 15 and a half years here, to have the surrounding counties come and recognize that we're about to do something great and wonderful for our community and join in. This is regionalism, it's about friendships and relationships, so I want to say real special thanks to Commissioner Delore up there, and Quentin Henley, and Brenda Carey, and all of those commissioners who think it not robbery to come to join in at this opportunity for Orlando and the region to grow. Thank you very much, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner. We'll move on to District 6, Commissioner Ings.
Thank you, Mayor. Excuse me. I'd like to say on Friday, September 20th, I attended the Focus on Excellent Breakfast at, that UCF, University of Central Florida sponsored. President John Hitt was on hand, this was a great event. Commissioner Jim Gray was there along with myself, and also I see Jerry Ross in the audience from the National Entrepreneur Center. Jerry was on hand too for this great event. And this is a great community event as well. And then of course, Mayor, congratulations on the City Kids Buddies Benefit for Children Program in support of the People Who Are Kids Zone that took place on Friday, September 20th, and out at the Portofino. And this was obviously a great event, so much support specifically from the community and also business support. So you and Commissioner Lyman, you all ought to be commended for the great effort that you're doing in Paramore for the kids. And to hear the wonderful testimony of the kids and how the efforts of the city has really made a difference in their lives. And of course, Mayor, you have a gator and partner out of one of the kids from the program, and so eloquently speaking, so it means that she definitely admired you a lot. And also thanks to Lisa Early and her team, Brenda March and all, for really taking care of the Paramore Kids Zone. Also coming up, this September through, 27 through the 29th, and there is going to be a banquet on the 29th, and this is Revelation Seed, which is a second reunion of recovery. Many women are, have been caught up into the drug scene and have now escaped, and so this is an opportunity that they are showcasing how their lives have changed for the much better. And so this event is going to be held at the Holiday Inn Express here in Orlando off of, off of International Drive. And they're also going to have Recovery Story Writing Contest, and so it's going to be a fun field and very helpful to those that are still having addiction problems, and you can come out and get support from that perspective. And then also, District 6, Commissioner Samuel B. Ings presents the Castle Caribbean American Restaurant and Banquet Hall, along with the owner, George Jackson, and they're located at 1025 South Orange Blossom Trail. We're going to have a grand opening and ribbon cutting event Friday, October 4th, and then also Chief Ings, the Law Enforcement Appreciation Day will be held there. This lady, George Jackson, has taken a building that police have responded to so many different calls from a nightclub activity that was going on there, and she's trying to change the makeup of what's going on in that community and get rid of the nightclub atmosphere, if you will. So she's got a wonderful restaurant there, and she's going to celebrate its grand opening, and we were talking about an upscale restaurant, and so come out and taste some samples of exotic Caribbean cuisine, and also for some entertainment, we're going to have some authentic jerk chicken, pork, and more. And then she's also going to supply some natural fruit drinks and shakes, so come out and let's share the food to her and the effort that she's trying to do. And then we had the Stroll for Life Family Fun Day Infant Mortality Awareness Month is going on right now. We had that this past Saturday at the Dr. James R. Smith Center. Thank you again to the Smith Center staff, Marlon Potee and all of his staff for really making this event comfortable for the people that actually came, specifically the vendors and all of the residents and neighbors that came. This event took place in recognition of infant mortality awareness and the important role of families and communities, unifying to promote healthier birth outcomes. The Healthy Start Coalition of Orange County, myself and the Florida Department of Health in Orange County, along with Dr. Kevin Sharon, the Director of Orange County Health Department, presented this fifth annual Stroll for Life and Family Fun Day event. And this event was a health and education celebration that was coordinated to help bring awareness to infant mortality. This was a free family event, and it began with a one-mile memorial walk, beginning at the Washington Shores Shopping Center Plaza, and then going to the Washington Park Cemetery, where we had a visual and prayer for the infants that have withdrawn, and we concluded at the Dr. James R. Smith Center with the health fair. And while infant mortality rates are declining overall across the nation and in our country, rates still remain high in pockets of Orange County, particularly among African-American residents. And in 2011, black infants had a mortality rate of 11.6 deaths per 1,000 live births, and this was more than double the national average for all races. So infant deaths can be attributed to many causes, including prematurity, low birth rate, sudden infant death syndrome. But our particular concern is the racial disparity that exists in birth outcomes. Black infants die two to three times more than white infants. A mother's health before and during pregnancy, early access to quality prenatal care, and the baby's health and safety is the key to a healthy outcome. And Stroll for Life events were coordinated by the Healthy Start Coalition's Save Our Babies Program and the Infant Mortality Task Force, which is comprised of local agencies, including the Coalition and the Florida Department of Health in Orange County. The common goals of this task force are to reduce infant mortality and prematurity, low birth rate, and to improve health and developmental outcomes of all infants. And their vision is to be the healthiest state in the nation. And so a special thanks go out to Dr. Kevin Sharon, who marched with me in the walk, and also former school board member, Linda Sutherland, and Monica May of 94.5, and JoJo O'Neil of 94.5 Radio Personalities were on hand to assist us with this event and walk with us during this special walk. Special thanks also go out to Selena Eubanks-Wills of Healthy Start Coalition of Orange County, and also P. Smith, Healthy Start Mom Care Program here in Orange County, and that's all I have, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. We move to District 4, Commissioner Gray.
Thank you, Mayor. I've got a couple of quick points, mostly thank yous for folks. Last week, on the 18th, attended the Open House of the Walmart, Neighborhood Market at Pageant 436. Not only did they do a great job, but that was a redevelopment of a grocery store that had gone out of business. So anytime somebody comes back in and brings an empty building to life, I think they deserve our thanks and appreciation, and I wish them all the best. As Commissioner Lyman said, she and I joined the mayor and Rick Waddell from EDC out at the Seawinds Wind Turbine Training Facility. I bring it up again, because to me, this is part of what our main mission is, is to work with Rick and his team, as well as the county, to bring some high-paying jobs. What they do there is, it's the only training facility in North America, and they train the folks that climb up and service and repair those huge wind turbines that you see out in the countryside. We don't have any in Florida yet. But at any rate, the point is, there'd be 50 jobs, and the average salary is about $80,000. And that's what we need to continue to keep pushing the envelope here in central Florida to bring up paying jobs. So Rick, congrats to you and your team. If anybody gets a chance to go out to that facility, I encourage you to do it, it's quite impressive, they do a good job. Friday night, the PKZ fundraiser, great event. I know a lot of our staff volunteered their time to make that a successful event, and I just wanted to say thank you for being good hosts to our guests, that was a great evening. And then Saturday night, we celebrated the 100th anniversary of the Chamber of Commerce out at the airport, and for me, that was a living history lesson to see. I think, Mayor helped me, we had, was it 32 of the presidents?
Yeah, the earliest was 1973.
Yeah, 32 of the past chairman of the Chamber of Commerce. It was kind of a history lesson, and it was well done, I appreciate the opportunity to participate in that. So that's all I had, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner Lyman, the District 2, Commissioner Ortiz.
And the last one. Thank you, Mayor. Let me start with congratulating Walmart also, even though it's in District 1, but it's in our Seminole corridor. And we've been revitalizing the corridor, and as we have revitalized it, we have seen new businesses coming in, and we're excited about the idea of how this Seminole corridor, which is possibly the most centralized area in the city in terms of what it's adjacent to everything else, is what we're building over there. So for the EDC, we have a task for you, bring those businesses over there. We're looking for jobs, jobs, jobs. So thank you. Last week, I attended the Hispanic Business Initiative Fund Annual Luncheon, along with the mayor and Commissioner Lyman. It was a great event, and SBIF is doing a great, great job. I want to congratulate Mr. Augusto Sanabria, Rosie Stover, Christina Pinto, and the whole staff, you guys are doing an awesome job, and we're looking forward to more involvement in what our community and helping the Hispanic community keep rising to the next level. Last Thursday, September 19th, we had our Neighborhood Leaders Council. We had two great presentations, one from Ms. Kathy Till, who used to be a commissioner in Apopka. She has now, she's a president of Kathy Till and Associates, and she talked about the local impact of state legislation, getting our community involved and helping us legislate and going up to Tallahassee, telling those guys up there, letting us, let us do what, actually, there's a tablet, there's this home rule, basically let us legislate at our local level for what is good for our community. It's kind of at the same time supporters and other legislations, that impact the whole state. So she did a great job, our community was really, really impressed with her presentation. We also had Mr. Walt Lashberg from the Orlando City Soccer Club, and he did a great presentation selling our soccer club, and Mayor and everybody took it really, they were really happy and excited about what is to come with the Orlando City Soccer Club. So congratulations to both of them. Last Friday, the Anna Jimenez University celebrated their 10th year anniversary, as they opened their first campus in Florida, which grows along here in Orlando. The president, Dr. Jose Mendoza, and the delegation from Puerto Rico came up to the event, and I want to send my sincere congratulations to the institution for everything they're doing. And let us not forget that that's the only institution in the United States where they teach college degrees in dual language, and it's not only for Hispanics, as for anybody from any country, including ourselves, you know. Here, if you are interested in learning the same profession, that you're practicing in a different language, in Spanish in this particular case, Anna Jimenez offers that, and that was a marketing piece without being paid for it. So I want to congratulate all the recipients of the Economic Development Funding Agreement Grant. You guys do a great job for us, and there's a few of you that I hold very dear to my heart, National Entrepreneur Center, of course, my UCF Business Incubator in my district, the SBIF, and our Florida Citrus Sport, not that the other ones are not, EDC and everybody else, it's not important, it's just that I get, for some reason, I get to interact with you guys a lot more, so, but I appreciate everything you guys do. On the agenda, Item C-Charlie 17. I was going to vote no on it, Mayor, I changed my mind, I'm going to vote for it, but I was wondering if there's a way of us extending the 80/20 formula after hearing Commissioner Lyman and also Commissioner Stewart. And the reason being is, we're revitalizing the Seminole corridor, and there's a lot of people that use this grant, and I don't think we're ready to let... And I don't think we're ready to let that go yet. We still have a lot of people that have that need. And I think it would be, we're not an enterprise zone, so it doesn't apply the terminology we have in our new legislation in the sense of extending one more year. And I was wondering, how can we make it so that they would benefit from another year extension? That's all I ask, because I'm planning to bring other resources to the area for the people to benefit in that particular area. So, I'm going to leave that in the hands of my, of our staff to see what we can do about that, Mayor.
Okay.
We definitely, and I know Commissioner Lyman's giving me the thumbs up, I hope everybody was giving the thumbs up about that. Our community needs it. We're seeing great changes in the seminary corridor, as I've said before. And to me, of course, I'm very proud because it's the main gate. And we're going to, we're planning on changing the theme. It's going to be hopefully called Orlando's Gateway, right? Right, Pauline? It is, it is. And we also, and lately, we have learned also of the great impact of our port, Port Canaveral, which also connects to that, to the seminary corridor. And I have a great partner, which is Commissioner Gray, which I know he's also excited about this, right, Commissioner Gray?
Absolutely.
So, if you guys can see to see what we can do to change that and possibly extend this for one more year, it would be awesome. That's all I ask, one more year, an 80/20 deal. That's all I have on that. And one more comment about Item J1, which is, and this is just a comment about that particular mandate from Tallahassee. I'm the president of the Tri-County League of Cities, and something we advocate a lot for is for home rule, which is where Tallahassee let us do what is best for our community. And I think we have done pretty darn good around here. And we have, we give our community a great chance to speak at our meetings and whatnot. And that's something we can take with our community to see how they feel about those things. In this particular instance, we won't be able to because it's pretty much a mandate from Tallahassee. But it would be nice if they give us some leeway for us to do what is best for our community here. That's all I have, Mayor. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Commissioners. There was a motion by Commissioner Lyman, second by Commissioner Sheen, and all favor of motion indicates so by saying aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Let's recess the City Council meeting and call to order the CRA. Let's see, Walter? It's one item, do you have that item?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
You know, I'm like...
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners.
Good afternoon, Walter.
We have one item, that is approving the agreement between the City, CRA, and the Florida Department of Transportation regarding the I-4 improvements. And just a little background regarding this, the Florida Department of Transportation is proposing to construct improvements to I-4 within the city of Orlando. Project generally consists of construction of additional travel lanes, related roadway improvements such as well as attendant sound walls and utilities. And in response to the city request, FDOT has also agreed at its cost to construct certain improvements to benefit the CRA as part of the project. These include aesthetics, lighting, streetscape, and hardscape improvements. Upon completion of these improvements, the CRA will be responsible for the maintenance. And we're requesting, staff is requesting CRA and FDOT approval of the attached agreement between the City, CRA and FDOT regarding I-4 improvements and authorizing for the Chairman and Executive Director to execute the agreement, subject to the review and approval of the City. Move to Attorney's Office.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Lyman, second by Commissioner Sheen, and other questions or comments for Walter? Good job, Walter.
Thank you.
Those opposed, motion carries. Any further business to come before the CRA?
No, sir.
Then we will adjourn the CRA and we can do the City Council meeting. Hearing this audit's first read, Madam Clerk.
An ordinance to the City Council of the City of Orlando, Florida, amending the city's growth management plan by changing the future land use map designation from office meaning intensity to mixed use corridor meaning intensity for about 2.5 acres of land within the Saban Plan Development, located generally north of West Oak Ridge Road, south of Interstate Highway 4, east of Florida's Turnpike, and west of Millennium Boulevard, and comprised in total of about 69.7 acres of land, amending subarea policy S.24.5 relating to the Saban Plan Development, directing amendment of the city's official future land use map series and subarea policy S.24.5, providing for severability, correction of scrutiny errors, and effective date.
Same move.
Motion by Commissioner Sheen, second by Commissioner Stewart, is there anyone from the public to testify on this matter? Discussion on Commissioners, no, all favor of motion indicates so by saying aye. Those opposed, motion carries. This meeting begins, we're moving to the second meeting.
An ordinance to the City Council of the City of Orlando, Florida, amending the land development regulations associated with certain portions of the existing Orlando Lutheran Towers Plan Development zoning district relating to certain land generally located north of East Jackson Street, south of East Pine Street, east of Lake Avenue, and west of South Osceola Avenue in the South Osceola, in the South Yola neighborhood, and comprised of approximately 3.3 acres of land, providing an amended development plan, providing for severability, correction of scrutiny errors, and an effective date.
Same move. Second.
Motion by Commissioner Sheen, second by Commissioner Stewart, is there anyone from the public to testify on this matter? Discussion on Commissioners, no, all favor of motion indicates so by saying aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Moving to the special, Madam Clerk.
An ordinance to the City Council of the City of Orlando, Florida, designating certain land located generally north of Josephine Street, south of Beach Boulevard, east of Penning Street, and west of Old Chain Highway, and comprised of about 7.1 acres as land development district with the Aircraft Noise Overlay District on the city's official zoning maps, providing special land development regulations with a PT zoning district, providing for amendment of the city's official map severability, the correction of scrutiny errors, and effective date.
Group approval?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Stewart, second by Commissioners, is there anyone from the public that would like to testify on this matter? Discussion on Commissioners, no, all favor of motion indicates so by saying aye. Those opposed, so the motion carries. Number two, Madam Clerk.
An ordinance to the City of Orlando, Florida, vacating, closing, and abandoning portions of South Nashville Avenue and Columbia Street, generally located north of Indian Street, east of South Rio Grande Avenue, and west of South Orange Blossom Trail, providing for severability, correction of scrutiny errors, and an effective date.
Same move. Second.
Motion by Commissioner Stewart, second by Commissioner Sheen, is there anyone from the public to testify on this matter? Discussion on Commissioners, is there anyone for the public to testify on this matter? Discussion on Commissioners, is there anyone for the public to testify on this matter? I'll remind you that we have a budget hearing at 5:01, and I just want to give you a heads-up. One of the items contained in the budget sets Commissioner and Mayor's salaries. And we did a market study, probably six years ago, for LIU and a market study for SEI. And increased some of those salaries, I think, by as much as 28% based on other markets. Some have steps, so it's not really appropriate to do that type of market study because in addition to cost of living, they also get step increases depending on the year that they're in. So, I thought it was appropriate to do a market study for my salary and for your salary. We looked at the state formula that the county Commissioners use, we looked at what the executive directors of other central board of public entities make. And the salaries that were set by the hearing last week, I think on an objective basis, the increases are certainly justified. But on reflection, while the economy is still recovering, I think that the percentage of increase, I'll give you the wrong message to the public. So, I'm going to make a proposal at the budget hearing that we're closely tracked, you recall that there were, out of the last four years, the City Council and Mayor have taken zero percentage increases three times. Two of those times, we went ahead and gave bargain for increases to the SEIU and to LIU. So, I'm going to have a proposal this afternoon, and if you'd like, I'll have staff brief you before 5 o'clock. But it's more in line with simply catching City Council and Mayor's salary up with what we have done for the other employees in the city in the course of the last five years. So, I just wanted you to have that heads-up, okay? So, I'll see you at 5:01.
Two appearances.
Okay. I'm sorry, two appearances then.